Be quick on the trigger finger there, Vic. He's allowed to put his cameras.
Yes.
All right, Vic, welcome, Wood. You can be on camera there.
All right, we're very welcome to the Village Board meeting at December 8th, 2022. Whatever on previous rods with Pledge of Allegiance. And in the moment of silence, the law first police officer, Frank Catalino, was killed in an armed robbery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so let me begin by introducing your Village Board. Joining us at the events table tonight is our attorney coming on. Next to her is trustee, Mr. Graziano. Joining us remotely, but being represented by that red solo cup at the desk over there, is trustee Vic Forelli. Next up is trustee Sue Suriello. Deputy Mayor Tara Hearn. And T. Meyer Wright is Village Clerk, Dazne Popman. And this is officially our first ugly holiday sweater night here in the Village. I'm the mayor. I am the mayor. Okay. Introductory Local Law 10 of 2022.
Yeah, I keep trying to tell him, Vic, turn your camera on. They just texted him.
Ella, Ella Tikani said, Vic, put your camera on.
There it is.
I guess he got the whole solo cup memo and he just figured that would represent him in photos. He does have the sweater on. Okay, public hearing. Introductory Local Law 10 of 2022 entitled Event Venues. So a public hearing is being held in town public comment on introductory local law 10 of 2022 to amend chapter 310 zoning of the village code to allow event venues as a special permit. The public notice was printed in the Times-Headed Record on December 1st, 2022. Let me note for the record, a memorandum was received by engineer Natalie Barber of H2M and also Phil Greeley, a college engineering on behalf of the planning board, which suggested broad changes and amendments to the amendments introductory local law 10. Turning on, we suggest the changes. Are they substantial? Enough that we remain in the public hearing?
No.
Okay, there you go. And may also not be received back from the county GM L239, which states they have found no evidence that significant interminable or county-wide impacts would result from this approval, and they have no advisory comments. So at this time, I will open it up to the public, beginning with row one. Everybody there, row two? Row three? Anybody? Okay. That he would fall under anyway.
George Smithville from Jacobson-Givens, attorney for the Rushmore State. There's a couple of points I'd just like to discuss briefly. One is I did submit a letter and then talked to this non at some length. We can clarify a couple of the issues that were raised in the letter. It addressed the other issues that I think remain to be discussed, but it was a constructive conversation, and I think we are becoming clearer upon what local law 10 is going to accomplish. So I just wanted to note that. You do have a letter which we submitted late this afternoon after that conversation, but was not, I was not able to incorporate everything that we discussed into the letter. So I believe there will be further discussion among the board members. It is thought about the issues that were raised in the letter, and I hope that will be, that will continue to be handled in the constructive manner that we've experienced the last couple of meetings. And I would like to thank the board and council for being constructively engaged in addressing the issues of concern and moving forward in a constructive manner. The final point is secret. I'm not sure whether he will be acting upon it tonight, but I did notice it's not on the agenda. This is a type one action, you are the lead agency, and just curious as to whether it will be considered tonight or whether there will be further discussion on the board after the public hearing.
All right, this time, there are new board members, any comments on local law 10?
Oh, yeah, online.
All right, my mistake. So is there anyone in the public who is joining us virtually who has any comments on this application or applicant for local law 10?
Gee, somebody connecting the audio.
Now, they're already in the meeting. Okay, hearing on. Can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing and accept written comment till December 16? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, since we have yet to receive comments back from the planning board, and since there were changes to local law or suggested changes, we are going to continue to keep this open. Attorney Norton, till our next meeting on the 20th?
No, the, the public hearing closed. But, but the discussion is still open. I would be making revisions. I do have to provide you with the planning board's report from last night, and I would say to hold up on the seeker actions for this evening just so that I can make sure that the documents accurately reflect any changes that the board does want to make in case they affect it from an affirmative standpoint or not.
So went down with this, correct?
Right, for tonight, yes.
There you have it.
Can I?
Sure.
You said that the letter that was sent is not all inclusive of changes that you?
There were, there was a couple of points I discussed with Helen. I think we had fire science for, maybe they can less, they may have less of a comment.
Some fun explanation, I think, some of his comments would be revised or would be.
So I guess you'll fill us in on which one of those on?
I have to look at what his letter said. I didn't look, I didn't get a chance to review it before tonight.
Okay, me, I'm very late, that's why I went by. Okay.
Moving right along. We have a more time waiver request from 197 Springs Road. Public hearing is being held in town public comment on a request for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022, which continued moratorium on the issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy and approval for the property located in 197 Springs Road. Public notice was printed in the Times-Headed Record on December 1st, 2022, and no written comment towards seeking. So is that who you representing the applicant?
Yes, hello?
All right, Larry, floor is yours. Why don't you speak on your application? Then we can move along.
Great, so let me give a little bit of a background about this project. This project started approximately two years ago. It's a single-family home, an existing single-family home. A client of mine bought the property and they started designing a new single-family home, a larger single-family home, on an existing two-acre property. At that point, it was supposed to be a very simple process. By the time we were finished designing, a new law got in place that every project that has the rich preservation that sits on a rich preservation road has to go through the ARB. We applied for the ARB, took a while till you get, till we got onto the agenda, and we complied with everything, showing that it fits into the area. But the problem was by the time we finished, the moratorium got into effect, and the board was not able to vote on it. We were, we came to the Village Board trying to get a waiver, but we got denied, that was about six to eight months ago. Recently, the, by the last extension of the moratorium, a new exception was added to the moratorium that if you have an existing well or some other criteria, but mostly if you have an existing well on the property prior of the moratorium, you are eligible for a waiver. So therefore, I'm coming back because now there's this new exception, and I would like to get the waiver.
That it, Larry?
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Is just a private well?
Yep.
Single family home?
Yep.
So we wrote the exception, okay.
All right, anyone from the public who is here with us tonight wishes to speak on this waiver request? Anyone who joined us remotely wishes to speak on this waiver request? Anyone remotely, going once, going twice? All right. So can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone who joined us remotely wishes to speak on this waiver request? Anyone remotely, going once, going twice? All right. So can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I got a motion in a second.
Chris Tara.
Oh, sorry.
All right, now, can I please have a motion in a second to grant the waiver request for 197 Springs Road? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it?
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Larry. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time for public comment on agenda items only. And tonight, I invited Roger Connor, who goes back many years of the Village of Woodbury. He is here tonight representing Altice. We also have Samantha joining us from Altice. And I asked Roger to be here just in case there were any questions on the Altice application that is under new business. So Roger, go ahead.
Thank you, Mary, you summarized everything perfectly. Yes, my name is Roger Connor and I'm representing Altice. On the agenda tonight is a, a request for permitting for what's called a remote optical line termination boxes as part of Altice's upgrade of this, of the cable system. Altice has engaged in a multimillion-dollar upgrade of its entire cable infrastructure to 100% fiber optics, removing copper wire from the equation altogether. What that will do is create a state-of-the-art cable system that will have greater bandwidth than ever before, and as more and more devices are attached to the internet and more and more of these devices are requiring greater bandwidth and higher speeds, this infrastructure will be able to handle that load and then some. So we're building for the future, and the request is to put more of these terminal boxes within the village in which the fiber optic goes in and then is distributed to the neighborhoods. So as Mayor said, I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have, and my colleague Samantha Pardele Geres is also on Zoom for anything that I can.
This is your foredeck. I, I still don't know how to program a VCR. It's either you and Vic on this subject now.
I'm water, but utilities are my, my thing. Two questions. One, is this like the same cabinets or originally discussed some time back?
How far?
Several months ago.
Several months ago?
Yes, okay. Second question, are you going to roll this out to all of Woodbury, including the areas? Because we have a lot of developments that have no poles. They're all completely underground wired. Are you going to be going into those developments as well?
Yes. Okay. Hey, Vic, Mr. Trustee Forelli? Yeah. All right, you have any questions on this? This is, once again, your foredeck.
No, I have no questions.
I guess, I don't, I don't know the first name. Highway Superintendent, round one.
I'm sorry.
You, you had the pleasure of meeting with Roger?
No, I met him with the other gentleman.
Okay. So nothing from there, all right. Roger?
Thank you.
We can detect all of Woodbury, right?
Yes.
Okay. Promise?
Village agenda.
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Just want to make sure the underground.
Yeah, because that's what we always did.
When you, Clark Popman, two minutes. I told him, I brought out a couple of mics. You want? Because, well, I guess, because we are a workshop quartet.
If you put the mics on, you will not be able to hear the owl, and it will screw up the entire report.
I'm doing what the mayor asked me to do.
On this level? He's arguing with that because you need, then he needs to speak them out.
Okay, then we'll speak loud. If you do that, I'm just telling you, it's gonna, it's gonna screw up, it's gonna create feedback.
Is he?
Yeah.
Sorry. Please extra steps for the fifth bit, really.
That's all, okay? Are you saying negative?
No, 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 that's not all.
All right.
Anything?
Not really. Okay, asking anyone in attendance if anyone has any public comment on agenda items only. All right, anyone joining us remotely? Have any comments? On agenda items only? Okay? Moving right along. Okay, finish straight to business. And please have motion in a second to accept, received in a minute for the meeting held on November 15th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
There you go. All in favor?
Aye.
Any requests? We can do that moving forward. Village Clerk Popman?
Yes.
Will you please read abstract 11?
Abstract 11, page 221105 and 221276, and totals $743,668.68.
All right. Can I please have a motion in a second to, to approve abstract 11 as read?
I might have a motion.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. So we're, actually, somebody noticed we're keeping track at many times I say moving along because apparently I say that a lot. So I do need to come up with a new catchphrase. So I'm taking suggestions tonight during the meeting. All right, can I please have motion in a second to approve Fire Department Court request, 32 of 2022, totaling approximately $590 for the purchase of one saw and two batteries per set saw?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eighteen, aye.
There you go. All right, all business. Secret actions on the Dazzney legislative grant for the purchase of the Central Valley Firehouse. So as you may or may not know, the Central Valley Firehouse is privately owned by the Fire Company, the village paying a yearly lease. The village is working to purchase the Central Valley Firehouse through that and State Senator Scoopis has awarded this grant in the amount of $250,000 to purchase the firehouse. But a secret action is required to be conducted. So can I please have a motion in a second to declare the Village of Woodbury water trustees as lead agency in the Dazzney project known as Purchase the Central Valley Firehouse?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can I also now, along those lines, can I please have a motion in a second to type this project as an unwisted action under the secret? Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. New business. Addition to the electrical inspector list. So Building Inspector Mike Canoe has recommended adding SAS electrical inspectors to the approved list of Woodbury of electrical inspectors. And I please have a motion in a second to approve this recommendation.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we come to Altice. So Altice USA is investing to build a 100% fiber network so it will be ready to meet the evolving broadband needs of residents and businesses. The tech and system architecture requires the placement of ground mounted cabinets known as remote optical line termination points. The cabinets are self-contained, do not emit radio waves. Placement of cabinets is based on design and engineering and are subject to the number of homes per mile density. As such, they would like to install four cabinets in the village wiggity split, as my words. One of, one of the Schlotter Road, across from Nazero or Ridge Road, across the street from Seven Springs Road, Maple Road, across from Route 32 and Bill Van Land. Superintendent Wyatt has met with Altice's contract and the site inspection is conducted. Altice has an application before the planning board for the cabinet installation. At this time, they need the permission of the Village Board to elect to place the cabinets in the right way. So can I please have a motion in a second to approve the placement of board cabinets in the village right away by Altice for their fiber network system?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Congratulations. It's a boy.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, we need to schedule a public hearing for moratorium lady request for 1527 Springs Road. So can I please have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing held on December 20th, 2022, at 7:30 PM? Any public comments on the application whereby the property owner of 1527 Springs Road is alleging that it suffers unnecessary or extraordinary hardship from the moratoriums?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Hey, guys, in the basket, that's my.
Roger, you should know that. There you are, there you are.
Bye, Roger.
Bye, Roger.
Roger, Roger.
Put him on our Christmas list, please. Authorize moving right along. Long, aye. Authorize court design, low cap plan amendment. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize the HARP, Village Clerk, as player administrator, to sign the amendments in the low cap plan to increase the benefit from $20, $20 a year active to $30 a year active beginning January 1, 20, January 1 of 2023, as per the special election held on September 13th of 2022?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, there's ready. Okay, discussion and vote potentially. All right, so let me go through this. Gonzata Park and municipal boundary lines. So this subject was brought to the attention of the board several months ago. At the time, the board decided not to entertain any action. In a meeting that trustee Forelli and I recently had with the state senator, he brought the subject back up again. Within Gonzata Park, there is a small faucet that represents a channel through annexation for, for Blooming Grove. Its potential annexation would remove the shared boundary between Comtry, Curitiba, and Blooming Grove, South Blooming Grove. That's creating a buffer and cutting off any channels to annex. Woodbury would realize a marginal benefit with the additional parkland and associated property taxes paid by the county. So, does the board have any questions or comments?
It's not going to matter, is it?
Anything? So are we ready to take a vote? What's your pleasure? Okay. So can I please have a motion in a second to approve the land swap? I guess it's the best way to put it.
Oh, God.
So they, it's, it's the annexation, so it has to go through the annexation procedure?
Yes.
With, and I think that the way that he was requesting it be started was that the county take the lead on that. I think it would just be all right.
What I want to do is authorize the Village Clerk to send letters to the county, the next quarter.
Okay, that part I'd be okay with.
There you go. Okay, can I have a motion in a second to approve the land swap? And to, to authorize the Village Clerk, or shall I, HARP, the Village Clerk, Popman, to send letters to the county in favor of proceeding forward with the swap?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes regular business here in the Village of Woodbury. So I now go out to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on anything, go right ahead. Introduce yourself, fellow gentleman.
Lady Lynn.
Sure. Beverly Solberg, Highland Hills, Highland Lake Estates in particular. So a local law of three. This was a couple of weeks ago. Does that?
Local law three? And it will be going back to February 1st?
No, it was mentioned a couple of weeks ago. For the fire, fire convention, that's all the law four.
Okay.
And that was adopted on June 9th. For 22? Just here.
Issue, get Beverly's out. Just, just.
All right, so I, I wanted to know whether, so Highland Lake Estates falls outside of the parameter of the town and village rules in terms of roads and safety and parades, you know, road safety. So with this, does this apply to the shores?
The Knox Box law?
The Knox Boxes.
The Knox Box law, if I remember correctly, Kelly, you've been.
Commercial property.
Yeah, commercial properties and multi-family homes were the only two that were associated with the Knox Box law?
Okay, what about, you know, people gathering?
There was no gathering law portion of that local law, if I remember correctly. Like I said, it is applying to commercial businesses, like say, central, central like property on Route 32 or Pastrama there, because you have residential, and then you have the commercial space below, and then any kind of like apartment complex or apartment building or anything with multi-families within. So it does not apply to tools or. No, there's probably Airbnb's also. It does not. And we do not have the gathering law on the books. in Woodbury. I don't know if that answers your, but I mean
Yeah, I just want to know if it applies to them because, you know, it's a gathering, it's, I'm considering it commercial, it's like a, a place of worship, gathering meetings. Um, it's in a community with homes next door, they're all stick-built and so if there's an emergency, a fire, um, how would that be addressed if the occupants or the owners or the responsible parties cannot be reached?
These knock, knock boxes are really there for emergency key purposes for Woodbury community ambulance, the fire department. They're usually for, like I said, multi-family dwellings or commercial buildings where they would need to get into multiple spaces in case of emergency. With a shul or any kind of Airbnb
Churches.
Church, whatnot, is, you're through the front door, you're there. So it really should apply to those particular
Doesn't matter, sure, it doesn't matter, doesn't it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Any other public comment from you, anyone here joining us today?
Was it, was there a catchall over that, reading the law now? I don't know, you have a
I do.
Number six.
Yeah, so if the building department fire marshal were chief based on a particular need, um, to act, they, they could request a knock box based on a particular need. If they came in and saw that one was necessary, they could make that request, but they have not done so in the initial, any issues.
They do.
Oh, sorry, so the law says that a knock stocks could be required at the request of the building department, the fire marshal, or the chief of the fire department, based on any particular need to access the building for safety purposes that they may find or have. Right now, neither, none of those have asked for that, for any shuls or churches or anything like that.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here joining us in person? Public comments? Anyone joining us virtually wish to speak? Okay. Moving right along to the comments. Mike Pinella, building inspector, you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, good evening, I got nothing, sir, thank you.
Highway Superintendent Ron White?
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right. Village clerk Popman, nothing? None? More comments, starting with the Redstone woke up? Vic? Vic Porelli, you have any comments?
No, no comments tonight, I'll go into a coffee in a sec.
Okay, there you go, thank you, sir.
Something about these here.
Coffee?
Yes.
Still lacking fit. You never know with that beat.
Trustee Grant Summala?
All right, um, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, as we come to the end of another, believe it or not, another year already, uh, they're going very fast and it seems the older I get, the faster they seem to be going, but um, again, it's been one hell of a year, there's been a lot going on and um, I'm very proud to have worked besides people on, that are on this village and on this board. Um, everybody does a fantastic job and I couldn't ask for a better set of people to work with. I'm very proud of everything we've accomplished. The world has gone round in circles, up and down, side to side, and sometimes sideways over the last couple of years in COVID between um, some really drastic political differences and wars and a lot of other things, shortages and the it's just been a really crazy couple of years and I'm hoping that as we head into twenty twenty-three, we kind of calm all that down and return a little sense of normality. I'm tired of hearing pandemics, tripledemics, wondremics, and you know, I mean, all that is, you know, I'm really looking forward to kind of a sense of some sort of normalcy in twenty twenty-three, so I'm really hoping for that. And other than that, I just want to wish everybody a healthy, safe holiday season, a happy new year. Um, be safe with your families, hopefully everybody has prosperity and everything goes well for you in the new year, and I thank everybody for all your participation. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Suriello?
I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, there you go. Can you name your viewer?
I do not have anything.
That's to be, I guess I really don't have much to go on.
Oh, I took that, I took that down.
Ooh, you saw.
Yeah.
Oh, it's moving right along.
Let's put the rose colored glasses back on.
I could. So here's hoping the turkeys are juicy and moist this Thanksgiving season. Um, I want to thank everyone for attending tonight's meeting. Our next meeting is December twentieth. I really don't have anything very much to add tonight, so with no further business to discuss, can I please have a motion in a second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Our next meeting is scheduled for December twentieth. Tuesday, December